I would like to call the April Town Council meeting to order. Please stand to salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens and on earth.
Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes. Discussion and possible vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meeting of March 5th, 2019, to be accepted and approved by the Town Council. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Councilman Finn McGeady. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? If you have your non-allos in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to skip around due to people being here. Item number 16, traffic parking at Steven Only School. Councilman DiLorenzo requests discussion and possible vote on the parking situation and bus schedules for the streets in the area surrounding Steven Only School. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing this forward a little bit. A few of the questions that I had earlier were the bus situation at Steven Only School as well as the parking at Steven Only School. A gentleman here just handed me a map as to what they're going to do and to see if I got it quickly. The bus are coming up, dropping off at school. The buses are going to come up Salem. Am I correct? Although they drop off and all the way through Salem onto Smithfield. Also that the street on Salem is going to be a little wider than it normally is. Is that correct?
Just state your name. Just come to the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Chad Healy. For those of you who didn't get a chance to meet me five minutes ago, I'm a project manager with Colliers International and we were hired by the town to provide OPM services for both Steven Only and the Maguire Project. So to answer your question, the road does get widened in order to provide enough space for the buses to pull over on Salem Ave. and be more or less out of the way of the drive itself, Salem Drive.
So when the buses drop off, the children, they're going to come all the way up Salem. They're not going to go on any other street, Don Avenue, Pilgrim?
Yeah, that's my understanding. The intent was to not put them in a situation where they have to turn around.
Okay. Now, the question that we just talked about was anywhere from forty to fifty, maybe sixty cars for teachers, TAs, administration, principal, vice principal. And I understand that this park right here is not going to be designated a parking lot for them?
Yep.
Teachers, administration.
Yep. Yeah, there's that location and there's also the location at the bottom of the page.
Here.
Down and to the right. Yeah, right there.
Here and here as well.
Correct.
And it will fit how many cars if needed?
Yeah, I don't know the specific numbers. I believe they're written on there, but the, yeah, we've reviewed the required number of spots and included them.
So this will be made bigger if we can in fact buy some properties that way? I guess we're talking about, am I correct?
Yeah, there are a number of options that we're exploring, possibly expanding the amount of parking, but nothing is concrete yet.
Okay, is there going to be, do you know this question? Is there going to be forty, fifty, sixty cars there between teachers and TAs? And do you know the answer?
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to give you that exact number. I know we, we were given numbers by either the town or the school department early on in the project and those were incorporated in, in this project.
What's that? Any questions for Mr. Healy?
I'll have a copy of this for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, for addressing that as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, item number two, purchase of 15 Cottage Street. Mary Lombardi requests discussion and vote regarding the purchase of 15 Cottage Street. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. As you probably are all aware by now, we have two new schools going up and most of the schools, getting back to the parking, if you don't mind, have basically enough parking for everyone that works there. Now, if there's a special occasion or something, then that might be an issue, but the normal day-to-day parking doesn't seem to be a problem. Now, at Steven Only School, there are some plans on the table to purchase two other pieces of property there. If that happens, then we're golden. That would only enhance the whole traffic pattern and additional parking if we need it, but we don't foresee seeing any additional parking there right now. We don't, at this point, we don't see any problems with it and so forth. That's number one. But tonight, I'm here basically to inform you and ask for your blessing on the purchase of a piece of property on 15 Cottage Street that abuts Maguire School. For those of you who are not familiar with it, that Cottage Avenue runs behind Maguire School and it's the first house, once you pass Maguire School in the back. It's approximately sixteen thousand square feet, which is a nice piece of property, that abuts the play area in, at Maguire School. Now, that might be utilized for either additional play area or for additional parking or for both. They might split it up. I have a sale, a purchase and sales agreement here. I'll link it with you so you could have it, you know, for information, to give you some information on the home. The home was assessed at two hundred seven thousand and we bought it for one hundred seventy thousand dollars. The funding will come through the school department. That's all been settled already, so it won't affect any bond money that's going to the school. And just for historical purpose, the woman who owns this home told me, if it's accurate, that her dad sold the town the land where the old Maguire School sat. So I guess the family finished it up with this last piece of property. It's, it's just a piece of property that would enhance the whole Maguire School building and the price was right and we're looking for your blessing. If anyone has any questions about Maguire School or Steven Only School that you might have been asked, well, Chad is here. He works on it every day. I'm the chairman of that committee. I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, you all have the purchase and sales agreement in front of you. Is there any questions on it? Any questions?
I think something you might want to hear. The last question I ask at every meeting is, are we on time and on budget? And I've been told many times, we're on time and on budget. And I know where he lives, gentleman.
That's good to hear. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the purchase of 15 Cottage Street? Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? If you have your non-allos in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'll leave this, I'll leave this for the record.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, Tyler and Lombard Street abandonment petition continuance. Received communication from attorney John V. McGreen, attorney for Countryview Holdings LLC, to ask for a continuance of the petition to abandon portions of Lombard and Tyler Streets that was continued to this date. As you know, we received a letter that I'll read into the record. Dear Madam Clerk, I am represent, I represent Countryview Holdings LLC in connection with its petition to abandon a portion of Lombard Street and Tyler Street scheduled for hearing before the North Providence Town Council on April 2nd, 2019. My client's request this matter be continued to the June 4th, 2019 meeting to give, excuse me, Countryview an opportunity to appear before the planning board on this matter in May prior to appearing before the North Providence Town Council. Sincerely, John V. McGreen. Okay, do I have a motion to continue this to June? Motion's been made by Councilman Finn McGeady. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? If you have your non-allos in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, Class F liquor license. Town council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F license for Mary Mother of Mankind Church for April 11th, 2019. Could you please just state your name for the record?
I'm Father Dennis Keaton, pastor of Mary Mother of Mankind Church. We're applying for the F one-day liquor license for our all-you-can-eat clam chowder and clam cake dinner to support our St. Vincent de Paul Society who, times must be tough, people, because we're getting people sent to us from towns and stuff to help them with their, with their rents, their clothing, their heating bills, and we need to raise money because we support these people. So the dinner is to support that and the clam chowder and clam cakes go well with a little beer, a little bean. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Father?
I'll make a move.
Motion to approve has been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? If you have your non-allos in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council.
Okay, I'm going to go to number 11 because our police department, our deputy chief and lieutenant are here. Item number 11, Spicer Street. I'm going to bundle all the parking issues together. So item number 11, Spicer Street. Communication was sent to Christopher Watiker, owner of Providence Bagel, to appear to address parking and traffic issues on Spicer Street. Is anyone here from Providence Bagel?
Yeah, we are.
Lieutenant Tavrosi, do you want to start?
Sure.
Yeah. Why don't you give us an update first as to what's going on?
Good evening, Council. Lieutenant Tavrosi from the police department. Just an update, we've been monitoring Spicer Street pretty much around the clock. We've had all shifts going over there, monitoring the new signage that's on the road. Obviously, it's a learning curve and we want to be as diplomatic as possible, so we want to make sure that we give the residents and also the business the ability to have that time, that somewhat of that grace period to learn how the actual enforcement works. I mean, if there's any issues with the actual, the placards, we can, we can actually be like an advisory to them to let them know, obviously, if there's, you know, unforeseen issues that, you know, come about. I mean, I know that there's been some, some talk that there's been vehicles parked in front of the residents. We've been trying to move the cars to mediate the problem for right now. I feel like that's probably the, you know, the best way to treat it for the time being. And like I said, I was over there this morning. I spoke with the residents from number 18. I had a good conversation with them and, you know, some of their complaints was obviously vehicles being parked in front of their, you know, the actual residents. I was there today and it was minimal cars parked on that road for the timeframe I was there. And like I said, we're going to continue to monitor it, you know, here on out, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the lieutenant? Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
On the parking or all, the whole one together?
On the parking.
Okay, no, I think I had a nice long conversation.
Can you just come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, I'm Denise DuPaul from 18 Spicer Street. We had a nice long conversation this morning and I'm going to leave it in his hands because he seems to know what he's doing and he's very concerned about the parking issue and I trust him. So I think we have a good relationship there as far as that goes.
Thank you.
I mean, he's doing his job, beyond his job, really, so.
I, for the record, would like to commend our police department.
Oh, yes.
On the way they've handled, I mean, every situation in town.
Oh, we have a very good police department. We really do.
You're the best.
There's no business abouts about.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, like I said, we had a really good conversation and I think what he plans on doing is fair.
Thank you.
So, I mean.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I live on Spicer Street also and I, I talked with the officer that was there this morning and he was going to get back to this officer in charge of the project. My main concern is in the, just in the last two weeks alone, you have that strip where the bagel joint is and as far as I'm concerned, they have that back, which is only for the dumpster to go in and the three people parked there, but that back side should be designated for delivery of box trucks and trailer trucks because you can't, because they pull up and if there's cars there, they park anywhere they can. Last week, I couldn't get in the street because the box truck parked where the sign was because there was all cars there. The week before that, I pull up on the street and I'm, what the hell is going on, Mineral Spring Avenue? When I finally get up there, I realize I got to wait there because the guy with the box truck pulled in, same thing, he couldn't get by. Now I had to wait to let him back out on the street. He went in Taco Bell, I guess, so we can go in there and tell him, somebody's got to move their cars so we can make the delivery. So I don't see why the back, from where that back driveway is, so many feet whatever forward to put parking for deliveries only so that they, the delivery trucks don't, because there was another one when I went to talk to the two guys putting the sign up Friday and they said the same, they says, the truck pulled into Duncan Dorner's blocking six guys in with that while he was unloading his trailer truck and even the guy said, he said, if somebody comes around the corner and hits that truck, the trucks have fought because they don't belong there. So that was my, my main concern with, because other than that, everything was fine with the officer I talked to this morning.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I don't know, Marcelo nine Spicer Street. I got a few complaints about that. First of all, that was meant to go in for the help. They come in on Spicer Street and go in there. Cars are going in there and out of there. There should be a chain put up or something where the customers can't go through there and interfere with us. Another thing, they got a narrow sign going in towards there. Now, a driver coming up sees it, thinks he can go through it. That should be erased from, from the ground.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone like, from Providence Bagel, like to speak on this matter?
This is the owner of Providence Bagel.
Just come to the microphone, please. I think our police department has a good handle on what's going on. If you want to add anything.
The only, the only thing that I have confusion on is about two hours ago, on the side, on the, of the building, we were, I was parked there personally and a fellow police officer had pulled up behind me and he said he was told today that there was no more parking on that strip there. He said it was no longer twenty-five feet from Mineral Spring Avenue. There's twenty-five feet no parking to the corner. There then are about three or four spaces that are available before you get to the entrance to Providence Bagel. Those spaces, Chris was told today, could no longer be used for parking, but I think that that might have just been misinformation, but they can be used for parking.
Lieutenant, thank you.
So, no problem at all. So the actual side that they're talking about, we did allocate enough room for three additional parking spaces, so you are able to spot, to park there. It's just twenty-five feet from the corner, Mineral Spring back. We're just not, so obviously you can utilize that if you have any deliveries or whatnot, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions for the owner of Providence Bagel? Councilman?
This is, excuse me, less of a question, more of a comment. I, I came in and I believe I introduced myself to you.
Yes.
As well as Shelley. And this goes to Mr. Marcelo's concerns. I know that, obviously, from time to time, certain customers are going to pull on that side from Spicer Street, but I was told that they have numerous cameras and they monitor them on a regular basis and they've been addressing it in real time when they see infractions happen. Obviously, sometimes people are going to slip through, but I think you guys are doing a great job of at least trying to monitor it and keep it to a low flow, so I appreciate that.
I appreciate, I mean, our, our goal is to be good neighbors to everybody and our goal is to be a great business for the town of North Providence and we're doing our absolute best. We've made a lot of changes. We're parking behind, Jackie's our staff now. Jackie's been fortunate, you know, enough to us to let our staff park there, so they're not parking in place anymore. We've told our delivery, you know, all of our places to be, you know, respectful of our neighbors. We put posts up on social media out to thousands of people, hey, be respectful to our neighbors. So we're, we're doing everything in our power to be the best neighbors that we possibly can and we continue to and we continue to monitor our cameras to make sure that there aren't any issues. So I just want you guys to know and everyone else to know that we are doing a ton and we do want to be great neighbors, everybody, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just come to the microphone, please.
I have a question for the owner. You said you have cameras that monitor people coming in?
You have to, you have to.
Yes, cameras, cameras that monitor people coming in through every aspect of his building? Is that true?
Can you?
Okay.
Can you just come back up?
And then how do you allow people coming up Spicer Street, flying through your do-note design at the same time coming down through the drive-through? They park there, they blow the horns, they have augments. If you have cameras, do you not see this? I mean, to me, if I have cameras and I see this, I would be up there trying to rectify it. Right? This is our issue with your opening.
Ma'am, we're going to have, the town clerk's going to get those pitches from you because you have to give them to us and then we'll give them.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number 12.
All right, Mr. President, if we're moving on to item number 12, I'd have to recuse myself this time to a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12, 1460 Properties Incorporated received a request from attorney for Joseph Aishafano, owner of property located at 1460 Mineral Spring Avenue, to appear to discuss parking issues.
Hello, I'm Joseph Aishafano. Can I lift this up?
Take it out.
Take it out.
It's not for tall people.
Excuse me, Mr. Bacala. Sorry. I was unaware, I had a statement basically coming in tonight regarding my property. Basically here to defend my property in the situation. I was unaware that you had some constituents worried about the parking on Spicer Street, but I'm basically here to discuss what's happening with our property where the Wendy's is at 1460 Mineral Spring Avenue. Our situation is, is, has been the same since the beginning. I, I went before the, the planning board.
Mr. President, we're calling here to clarify a couple of items. And I understand that he's supposed to be here representing the attorney. So I want to make sure this comes with present or not, so we can meet in a direct way. Second, he keeps saying it can do or get, but we understand he's leasing this to Wendy's. So is this Wendy's issue or is this simply the landlord that he's been seven or eight months? You need to make sure it's clear. Do we have a different story?
Okay. Well, I don't care what story you have from Wendy's, but this person right here is the owner. Okay? This is the owner of the property, right here.
This Aishafano.
You're more than welcome to speak to me at any time.
You have to talk to me.
Sorry, Mr. O'Dell, I just wanted to answer his question since I was interrupted during my statement here.
As far as, I don't know where David Rosso comes on, who he's representing, but he can plead his terms.
Who, who are you representing, sir?
The owner of Providence Bagel.
Okay.
The owner of this property, the owner of Providence Bagel.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So now we all, exclusive.
Okay, go ahead.
You can go now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I came before the planning board, again, not to, this is something that the town would want. You'd want that property cleaned up where the poor Celis had it for years. It was, it was an eyesore, there was nothing going to be rented there and it was purchased, which was, it's great for the town and that a new business would go in there. Again, I, like I said in the previous time I was in front of the planning board, I have nothing against Providence Bagel. I think it's a good business. I think it's a beautiful building, okay? My issue was, and I, and I just want to put on the record that, and I'll be quickly, I'll quickly state this, is that when I came in front of the planning board, I was speaking to the planning board about things that I had discussed with the planning director, Dave Went Scott, okay? And on numerous times, asked him numerous questions, he said, those are questions for the planning board. So then when I come here in front, in this room and I'm, I'm in the middle of my, my speech or my statement and I had all my facts laid out and I wanted to get through them, I see this bald head pop, pop up from behind the, the, the planning board and he begins to admonish me in front of the entire room, okay? So, and again, you have to respect the, you know, the room that you're in and the people that are sitting here before you're making the decision, so I let him speak. And I finally get to the point where I said, I'm here because these are the questions I asked you and you told me to ask them here. I never was able to finish what I had to say and, and I left knowing that, basically, I've been around long enough that this was already in the bag, this, this decision was already made as to the size of this building that's put on a fifteen thousand square foot lot. Again, it is a fifteen thousand square foot lot with, I think, a thirty-six to thirty-eight hundred square foot building. It has nine parking spaces in the front, one of which, I mean, and the tenth is a handicap spot. When I asked, when I asked the planning board why they were allowed to keep the side street open as to on Spicer Street, I was told, well, you have two entrances and exits on Mineral Spring Avenue, he has only one. Well, as a developer and a person in real estate and I've grown up in this business, been a broker for over twenty-five years, you know what you're buying. The job isn't for the town to make concessions so you can put up the building and make it work for you. When you go in, you buy the property based on the size of the property. How can I make this work for me? And so now, they put this building up. Now, now we're here and I knew it was going to be a problem. I've had people parking our Verizon building across the street and I had numerous people where I watched on numerous times, and I have videos of, of all this, where they don't even attempt to pull into Providence Bagel on the busy times. They pull right into the Wendy's parking lot, walk across the grass into Providence Bagel and then out to their car and they leave. They were parked all the way around the side, around the back. I have a video of the North Providence Police pulling in there, going in, two police officers. And again, I'm not blaming them, not blaming Providence Bagel, but this decision was made by the planning board to allow this sized building on this lot and now it does not, it will not accommodate the traffic it needs. I think they only have twelve parking spaces there. Now, Mr. Cho, who is the owner of this property, owns other properties, so he's allowing people to park on his other properties. Now, think about it, where, where are the employees going to park? How many employees would you have? If you have six employees, half of your parking spaces are gone. So just because he has other properties and that's going to alleviate the problem, what if he doesn't have these properties? What if he decides to sell tomorrow or is abducted, abducted by aliens? And then someone's going to come in there and buy his properties. Now they're not going to let them park. So you're, you're creating an issue for everyone, but I'm mainly here because of the issue for us. Now, this is my property. Wendy's is my tenant and Providence Bagels or Mr. Cho's property should not be dependent on my property next door to help service him and keep them in business. I don't know what, other than maybe an office building down the road, would, would, would satisfy the parking needs of that building. So I'm basically here to say that the, the people entering my property, my property, entering Providence Bagels and being serviced by Providence Bagel are trespassing and I am opposed to it in every way and I have the means and I have the experience to fight this and, and unfortunately, I feel the town made a grave mistake by putting this sized building here. Now, I don't know, I'm here to make, like, make my issues known, okay? And I'm hoping that it can be corrected in some way, but if it goes any further, I'm going to have to take steps that I don't want to have to take. I'm not here, you know, as, as my family's been in this town for over fifty years, you know, we're one of the highest taxpayers in the town. We're looking at develop, there are other pieces of property that I'm looking at right now that I'd like to purchase and I'd like to refurbish and make, you know, a positive, another positive impact on the town. So I'm not here to fight with anybody. I'm just here to protect my property and, and, I mean, I really think that's all I have to say. I don't want to take a lot of your time. I'm not here to fight with anybody or cause an issue. I hope Providence Bagel has a wonderful business. I think the building is beautiful, but now that it's there, it is going to cause a problem and, and I'm hoping that the planning board and Dave Went Scott dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's because if not, there's going to be some issues going forward and I'll have to handle them accordingly. So, you know, that's basically, I just wanted to make a statement just to put it on the record and I'm pretty much all set now.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Aishafano? Would you like to speak on this matter? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.[1798.22]
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Okay, item number 13, introduction of ordinance. An ordinance of the town of North Providence amending section 61 of chapter 19 entitled Speed Limits. We have the deputy chief, Lieutenant Taverozzi.
So the idea presenting, that I'm gonna present to you is basically, we wanna make it consistent, Mineral Spring Avenue from one end of the town to the other end of the town, 'cause at 25 miles per hour. There's a lot of reasons for that, I'm gonna provide that information for you. Currently, right now, we have a 25 mile per hour zone, 146 East to Pawtucket. We also have it from Thomas Street down by the bypass, that's 25, in between is 35. Some of the reasons why we feel that it would be a, you know, it would be a good idea to obviously amend the actual ordinance is because, obviously, we become more populated, there's, you know, a multitude of intersections throughout Mineral Spring Avenue, businesses, exits, you know, entrances, people crossing. Now, we add on, obviously, during the, you know, the school buses, during the school hours, it becomes problematic. So we feel that based on, obviously, the demographic of the town, obviously being more urbanized, that it would be, obviously, it would be more conducive to be at 25 miles per hour. Also, we wanna fall in line with the state Supreme of Facia, it's 3114-2, and it basically states that state speed limits shall be 25 miles per hour in any business or residential district. So obviously, we feel that, obviously, it's a major thoroughfare from Mineral Spring Avenue, it's a storefront from one end of the town to the other end of the town, so we feel it meets that criteria as well.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief, the police department here. Thanks for having us before you. In addition, the State Traffic Commission conducted a study on Mineral Spring Avenue over the past probably four or five months, maybe a little bit longer, and they've determined that the speed limit is too high for the amount of vehicular traffic, the amount of crashes that have occurred on that span of road. Our 10-year study, we've determined that approximately 45% of all the accidents that occur in town occur on Mineral Spring Avenue. Some of them could be related to speed, some of them could be related to turning issues, but obviously, the speed limit is a little bit too high based on our estimation. The State Traffic Commission has also determined that it is a little bit too high. They did their study over the past three years, they determined there were three fatalities on Mineral Spring Avenue alone, and most fatalities, as we all know, are due to speed-related issues. The State Traffic Commission has voted, and they will probably be putting this, making it official within the next couple of weeks. The Traffic Commission will be posting signs, they will have that posted signs within approximately about a month. They will give a two-week period prior to putting up the signs, and a two-week period after putting up the signs with message boards notifying the public of the reduction in the speed. We are more concerned about educating our residents and our visitors about the reduction in the speed. It's about, it's a public safety issue for us. Obviously, we wanna reduce crashes, we wanna reduce injuries, we wanna reduce property damage, and we also want to improve driving behavior, based upon our studies. 35 miles per hour is more of a speed for more of a suburban or rural area. North Providence, especially on Mineral Spring Avenue now, is more urban, whether we wanna admit that or not, with all the businesses and all the residents and all the traffic, it is more of an urban environment, and that is one of the reasons that we undertook this study with the State Traffic Commission.
Does anybody have any questions for the deputy chief?
Yeah, I have a question.
Counselman.
Chief, you and I had this discussion a few months back, and I'm just gonna make it public record because I feel very strong about this. This is not gonna become the power road of North Providence.
Oh, absolutely not. Our mission is not to generate revenue for the police department, but we will enforce the speed limit when there are certain violations or certain complaints from the neighborhood or different things that we've identified. It is not our mission to, you know, be strictly a traffic enforcement agency. We are a public service agency and a public safety agency, and when we see certain things that require our attention, it's our obligation to ensure that we are fulfilling that mission.
Any other, Counselman?
Harvard Avenue, Puffett Avenue, Route 2, are they all 25 miles per hour as well?
I do not know.
Is that part of the state mandate to be, to all be in that 25 mile?
No, no. Each road is looked at individually, based upon needs, based upon traffic volume, based upon intersecting streets. That's one of the issues that they determine, intersecting streets, major intersections, amount of private residences, driveways, businesses, things of that nature. Those are the criteria that the state utilizes.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Counselman.
Excuse me. Deputy Chief, based on the way you described it, it almost sounds as though the town doesn't really have a choice, though. It sounds like the state is, already has their mind made up on implementing this, and what we're trying to do is just an adopted and ordinance that will codify it. Is that true, or do we have some say in whether or not we adopt this?
The state has conducted their study, and they've determined that it should be 25. It's a state road, they're the ones that determine the speed based upon it, but like I said, as a public service agency, as a public safety agency, we decided to bring something to their attention, and they determined that that's what the speed should be. But, and you are correct, we are looking to get that language, corresponding language, at the town ordinance to mirror state law.
And in your experience in Pawtucket or elsewhere, if we were not to go along with that recommendation or somehow go against the state on that, I mean, what kind of implications could there be?
I'm not an attorney, I really couldn't answer that question for you.
Any other questions?
Hey, Counselman.
The only comment I have is, I understand what he's saying about...
Kenny, you just gotta state your name for the record.
I understand what he's saying about the Mineral Spring Avenue, as far as like, you know, the higher the speed limit, the higher people go. The only concern I have is, I know my car, I can barely make it up a hill at 25 miles an hour, so if people are gonna be giving tickets for 30 miles an hour 'cause we're going up a hill, I mean, where Lowe's is, and, you know, where, you know, the Mineral Spring Avenue where Michael's Florist is, I mean, going up that hill, you can't go 25, I mean, you'd be creeping. So, as long as the police officers understand that you gotta go a little bit higher on a hill. Now, I understand what they're saying, if you're going down a hill or you're going on a straightaway, then yeah, then maybe that's a little bit too high, 'cause people go 40, 45. But I'm just concerned about, you know, getting a ticket just going up a hill where, you know, it's very difficult to go up that hill on 25 miles an hour. So, as long as the police officers understand that you gotta go a little faster on a hill, then I would, you know, I understand. I understand where they're coming from, but that's my only comment about that.
Thank you. Counselman.
I'd like to motion to send out the ordinance committee.
Okay. Well, we have to advertise it for a public hearing anyways, so. So, Counselman DiLorenzo has a motion in place?
Ruth Bucci, I just have a question about that study that was done to make Mineral Spring Avenue safer. When Fruit Hill Avenue, which is also a state road, was made safer, they added plantings on the side, and of course, they had bump outs, I know there's no rumor on that, on mineral for that, but what about plantings that reportedly slowed people down, or, you know, with the trees or greenery like they did on Fruit Hill Avenue? Was that part of the study?
No, they did not mention that. That certainly something that could be wrong.
So, that's just a thought, a suggestion, as I heard the police officers recounting the study, and I know that there were improvements done on the state road, Fruit Hill Avenue, some years ago. They didn't reduce the speed, but they reduced the traffic speed. They didn't reduce the official speed, but cars were reportedly going slower because of the greenery, the trees and the shrubs. So that's just a thought, I wanted to throw that in, maybe the council could consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made by Counselman DiLorenzo to refer this matter to the ordinance committee, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Juisty, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce this for a public hearing at, introduce the ordinance at a public hearing at the May meeting. Motion's been made by Counselman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Amorigi, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Okay, item number 14, King Street. Council President O'Dell requests discussion and possible vote on no parking on King Street. I put this item on the agenda, and I'm gonna address it while our police department is still here, because a resident reached out to me with concerns on where his neighbors are parking. I went by there today, he said that Counselman DiLorenzo had helped him out in the past, and those signs seem to be down. I know Lieutenant Taverozzi's been to his house, Kenny, if you wanna come forward and just state your name for the record and explain what's going on.
Name is Kenny Testa. I live on Orchard, actually, but I'm on the corner of King and Orchard, you've gone there. Big issue is, the woman next door is running some kind of daycare, or there's, you know, people coming in. And basically, my, the side of my house is, has a fence with landscape and everything, and it has grass on the other side, and it's one of those bump out, you know, the bump that goes down for the rain, and my problem is, people, nine out of 10 cars that go in and out of there, park left to curb. So they're constantly coming around the corner and then coming on the opposite side of the street, okay? Then when they leave, they either pull out into the street and cross the whole street, or they back up past my driveway and back up into the street, go that way, or back up into the street and go that way. And some of the people put their kids in the car on the passenger side when they drive left to curb. So they're constantly doing that. When there's parties, you can only fit two cars there, so basically, you're only, the area that I want is just basically on the side of my house, because my driveway is there, so if you think about the corner being there up to the front, the first pole of my fence, that's the 25 feet right there, 30 feet. What I'm asking for is no parking anytime to take care of the rest of my property, like that 40-foot fence, and then the corner.
You wanna go to your spiral?
Yes, like right after that pole, because there's seven feet, you've seen it, and usually, the person across the street from me and the person next to me are the biggest problems. They have parties, there's people that park, they park next to my driveway, if I put two cars in my driveway, people can't even get out of the door, and it's too close to the corner, okay? Then if people park their two cars there, like I said, they block the whole, the whole fence, and they're pulling into the traffic or backing out into the traffic, okay? It's just, they block two driveways, the driveways are right across the street, there's no room. If you put two cars there, if you put a room, if you put two cars lined up on the, and you put cars on the opposite side of the street, I have pictures, there's barely any room to go by, you can't, barely fit one car through, okay? So that area right there of King Street, the rest is fine, 'cause you've got both sides that you can park, you're not blocking any driveways or anything like that. But these people, they have room in front of their house, they have a driveway across the street and the front of their house, and this person has room in front of theirs. If anything, their bushes are into the street, so they don't wanna park there, because they don't wanna block their house or their bushes. So, you know, it's a real problem, it's a real safety issue, you know?
Counselman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm assuming that you wanted from the corner of your property, probably back about 35, 40 feet?
Well, the corner is already like the first part of my fence, if you look at the pictures, the first part of my fence where the first spiral tree is.
Right.
From there to the corner is probably 25, 30 feet anyway, so you're not supposed to park there anyway, okay? So like I said, when they park there, if there's more than two cars, they're next to my driveway, and they're way too close to the corner, okay? What I want is a sign that says no parking anytime with an arrow toward my driveway, but at the second spiral tree, so that 40-foot fence that I have, that you could fit two cars there, they don't park there anymore.
Mr. President.
Counselman.
I'd like to make a motion to send that to the ordinance committee.
Okay, a motion's been made to send this to the ordinance committee?
Do you want me to see this, the picture?
We're gonna... Yeah, we're gonna get them, and we're gonna hear this in the ordinance committee, 'cause that will be the proper steps.
Fantastic.
All right? So a motion's been made by Counselman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Matone, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Did you wanna add to that, or? You want us to just have you come to the ordinance committee meeting?
Mr. President, yeah, absolutely. If you need me at the ordinance committee, I...
We'll notify you one day.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant. Thanks again, Counselman.
I just say one thing to our police officers, Lieutenant Taverozzi especially, if you go to check out that area, I actually lived at 33 King Street for about five years, and not only do they do what Mr. Testa's saying, they actually, a lot of the people coming to pick up at the daycare leave their doors open. It's an accident, it's a tragedy waiting to happen, so just...
Thank you. Okay, item number five, victualling license. Town council to consider approval of a victualling license for Aminata Triori DBA T's Convenience Store, 1254 Douglas Avenue, North Providence. Is there anyone here from T's Convenience Store? Is there anyone here from T's Convenience Store? Is there anyone here from T's Convenience Store? Do you have a motion to defer this item to the May meeting?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselman Fermagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Bacalla, any questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, peddler vendor license. Town council to consider approval of a vendor license for Nicole Trembetti, owner of Trembetti Hospitality LLC, 19 Elliott Avenue, North Providence. Is Nicole Trembetti here? Good, how are you?
Thank you for seeing me. I have, I apologize, I have written consent from both Captain's Catch and Sam Smoke Shop, which is now a different name, used to be Valero.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Trembetti? Troy, can I just see those? Does anybody wanna look at these?
I have a question. When do you plan on being there?
Well, the parade that we have on Mineral Spring and Douglas, and then Easter and Mother's Day, if I may. With all this I hear about parking, I have spoken to both Mark and Raja from both of the businesses, and I told them that during the parades, obviously, there's no parking, the street is blocked off, you know, it's not gonna be an issue, but I made sure to let both business owners and property owners know that I would do my best to not have a cluster at Valero where the dry cleaners are, where the, you know, Stephen Only, we got that other mess going on. So I just, I made sure to make, I made sure to let them know that I would do the best I can to not have any pileups of vehicles and keep everybody moving, because I deal with the same thing, I just tell people to enjoy their meal and stuff. So, with that being said, if I may have my...
Does anybody have any other questions?
The only other, the only other thing I see is, on the certificate of insurance, it looks like the town of Randolph, Massachusetts was the additional insurance.
Oh, at the bottom, yeah, sorry. I do have North, I have North Providence, I have Randolph, I have it.
Perfect.
If you need to see that, I can submit it. The only other question, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, you can ask.
The only other question I have is, I applied as a business, so, like, as my business, so are my employees covered if I'm on site, or no? I wanted to make sure of that in case, 'cause I don't want them to get ticketed if they're with me.
What do you mean by covered?
By this peddler, by this peddler's license. I applied as Trembetti Hospitality, so I have, I have employees, so I just wanna make sure that they're covered.
Yes.
I have to be on site, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanna be clear so that I follow the rules.
No, your employees are covered.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, a motion's been made by Counselman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Amorigi, any further questions? There be none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Good luck.
This is parade year, correct?
It's always a parade, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for coming away.
Okay. All right, item number seven, peddler vendor license. Town council to consider approval of a vendor license from Rachel... of a vendor license from Rachel Bamber, DBA Bam Novelty, to sell flowers on Easter and Mother's Day at thirteen ninety-four Middlesbrough Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four. Is Ms. Bamber here?
She's always here.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Yes, she's on the floor before.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Juisty to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, I have to recuse.
Okay, item number eight, expansion of liquor license, outdoor dining premises of Camp Nowhere. Received a request from James, gentleman, if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry. Rakowski, owner of Camp Nowhere, for permission for expansion of liquor license dining premises at Camp Nowhere, eighteen thirty-eight Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Request is for a space originally approved by town council to be changed and was continued to this date. Okay, Peter?
Members, Peter Pachacca for Camp Nowhere, with me is Mr. Rakowski, the owner and the manager, Mr. Spitzer. Some time ago, we were here for an expansion of premises, and Councilman DiLorenzo, I believe, brought up the issue of the location of the outside expansion. When we went back, that was not conducive to the building. In your package, it's been moved to the side of the building towards Smith Street. What they're looking to do is, very simply, include an area that's gonna have a service bar with four picnic tables, that's gonna hold a total of twenty-four people. In your package, they have already committed to the council and the board that the total capacity will not exceed seventy, both indoor and outdoor. They're not looking to exceed their capacity, they're looking to take anyone that was standing up, out, up inside to the outside with simply four picnic tables. That's all that is going to be there, that's it. No more, no less, it's not a standing area, the service bar is a service bar only, you can't sit there, you can't stand there. I know fire is here, they're going to testify, so with that, we would take any questions at this point, I know it's been-
Anybody on the council who have any questions right now, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Where this is going, does this impact the parking? So is it taking away parking spots?
It does, we lose two spots.
Two spots?
The way the parking lot is lined, there's two spots that go parallel, go in, they're lined in now, so we'd lose like one and a half of those, so it's a-
Just so the, the board is aware, and why don't you speak to, not that it is necessary for this, but why don't you speak to the amount of parking you actually do have for the building in the other areas?
Yeah, so directly behind Camp Nowhere, I initially called the Sorentos Plaza two that were kind of, there's an extra fifty spots back there, kind of the way our hours work. With Sorentos is, we haven't gotten into a problem now. Our busy times are not necessarily theirs, because there's a slight little overlap, but at least they have voiced their opinion to us that there's a problem, we have voiced our opinion to them. And like Peter said, we're not actually looking to increase the capacity, what we're looking to is increase the customer experience, the people that might be standing inside that we could offer to maybe sit down and take their patience a little bit longer.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Couple of questions. One, how big in square footage do you wanna put the addition of the corral you got there?
Twenty by thirty-two.
Twenty by thirty-two. Two, are you going to go into the driveway, is the corral gonna go into the driveway at all? In other words, coming from Smith Street, is it driveway?
No.
Oh, no, no, no.
Let me finish this question.
Where your corral is now?
Correct.
Six, eight feet from the corral, is an entranceway, a cut curb to get into that parking lot? Are you gonna go past that cut curb?
No. The, that curb, the curb is twenty-three feet away from the edge of our current patio, so we're going up twenty feet, it's not gonna interfere with the cut curb.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, yeah, okay.
Secondly, the piece of property that you have your corporate headquarters in is a separate piece of property from where Camp Nowhere is. So, parking space wise, do you legitimately have enough parking space in Camp Nowhere, minusing Sorentos parking where Sorentos is? Do you currently have enough space for the seventy people now?
The reason that we, we rent eighteen forty-eight is specifically to use the parking lot in the back, and that's strategically why, I mean, I-
I understand why you do it, it's just a different address, that's what I'm saying. It's a different address, I don't know if you can use that for parking. In other words, you can't put your one business into a different, into a different place, I mean, maybe someone can clarify that.
With all doors, with all doors, spec, Councilman, you can't.
Wait, 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 hold on, Mark.
Okay.
Will you guys just?
What I'm saying is, can you use the square footage of one area for another area? Regardless, you have two businesses or not, two different pieces of property, can you use one area for the other?
I don't, I don't follow you on that.
I, I, but I think, I don't follow the question either, but I think the, what he's asking is, you can utilize parking on another piece of land-
Of course.
-in order to, for Camp Nowhere, so they can actually lease that other space and that other parking lot to satisfy their parking.
But is it not two separate addresses?
It can still be two separate addresses.
So I can use a separate address to, to gain extra space to get extra parking?
Well, they may be doing that for that reason, but even if they didn't have that second corporate office, they could actually lease a parking lot next to the property of Camp Nowhere to satisfy their parking, as long as they came to the licensing board with a lease.
I don't think it has to do with the office itself.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The proposed new seating area, there's a bar, the outdoor bar that's gonna-
It's a service bar.
A service bar, okay.
Service bar only, that, that only serves the patrons. You can't go up there and order a drink-
Gotcha.
-and you can't stand there and have a drink.
Gotcha.
I can explain the difference between, like, the bar indoors, people can sit at and you can talk to the bartender and stuff. Some of our problems are, is just the ticket times and being able to satisfy customers when they do sit outside, just the process of somebody coming out and taking the order, coming in, takes ten minutes to get something to come out. Whereas opposed, if we have a service bar outside, the order gets run into a tablet, right, it gets printed ten feet away, and then the service bartender can expedite the process of getting the food order in and then the drinks to the customers.
Because my only-
Then you're left on the bar, then the server comes, takes it, and then brings it to you.
My concern was, and I'm not sure from your rendering, but is there, is there only one entrance to get into the front of the building, the proposed new seating area, or are there multiple entrances to get to that new proposed seating area?
There could be multiple entrances.
Okay, well, it, it really makes my concern a little more irrelevant, because what I was afraid of is that if you are checking IDs at the front door and somebody who's underage comes in through one of those side entrances, but it is a service bar that you have out there, so then would alleviate that concern.
They'll never be bar stools or anything like that.
Okay, understood.
And in the summer, the, our door hosts are gonna be checking IDs when people enter the outside patio.
Okay.
Any, any gap in the security regarding personnel?
Gotcha, thank you.
Murray?
Yeah, there's not gonna be, will there be any speakers or TVs or anything like that outside?
So we currently have one TV outside now with no sound, that we just kinda leave running. There's been speakers the entire time, we're not planning on adding any more, it's possible we might add maybe one on the side, but it's, if you guys just drive by, they're on twenty-four hours a day and no one can even hear them, it's, it's not like the music inside, it's just enough for a little bit of a mood, but it's, it's nowhere near, you can't hear it standing in front of our office at ten feet away.
So nothing, essentially nothing additional to what you're already doing, as far as outside?
Correct.
Anybody else?
No, I just wanna ask, if I may, the last time you guys were here, police, fire, we thought everything was okay, is that signed off from now, is everything?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna-
They're here, they're here.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's certificates and everything is, you know.
They're here, Councilman, that was, you were absolutely correct.
Thank you.
You were.
Because, I don't know any better, I wanna ask this question, just for public knowledge, serving outside, do you have a license to serve outside? The license that you currently have, does it have, give you the availability to serve, to serve booze outside?
If you give them the expansion of premises, it does, if you do not, it does not. It's that simple.
But right now, they have to serve out front, they have, we gave them an outdoor, outdoor dining license, which allows them to do it in the front, they're trying to do it in the side now, so they're trying to expand what we've given them, the outdoor.
The other, that, the other thing that we, I got a lot of complaints about is the butt, beard tap outside.
Do you wanna put a note?
I, if it's, if it's behind a bar, I got no problems with that, where you got a bartender. But you had that tap right out in that area, so.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's been locked off for a year.
Eliminate that, eliminate that, put it behind the bar-
Correct, sure.
-and you'll get, and you'll get rid of them.
But, so are you, are you saying, so that bar is gonna be serving liquor outside, not coming from inside outside?
No, a service bar for outside is going to service outside.
So it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a full bar?
Correct, yes, that's a service bar, you just can't, you can't stay there. I, I don't know what the confusion is, but a service bar is to service alcohol in that location, so.
So I walk up to that bar and I ask for a drink?
No, no.
That's gotta come from somewhere else.
That's one of, there's a specific bar that you never see, that, for table service when you're not at the bar, to expedite the process of you getting your drink faster, when that order goes into the computer, instead of the ticket printing at the main bar where you're dealing with all the customers.
You're printing it there, but you're still going in, getting it, bringing, bringing the drinks outside.
So then there's, currently still gonna be two bars outside?
Yeah.
There's gonna be one bar inside, one bar outside.
No, there's gonna be the draft that you have outside probably now.
Oh, you can get rid of that.
Yeah, that's been locked for a year.
Yeah, we're, we're just scrapping.
But it's there.
No, it's easily removable.
Okay, but it's there, currently right outside, you can use it. No, so then you're gonna have another one on the other side?
If, we're gonna make the bar that's out there now with the draft system bigger so we can effectively serve customers that are outside. What, what we have now is, we built maybe an eight-foot bar that has a draft even under it, that's why customers can't get to it. That's gonna be inclusive in the full service bar we have outside, the service bar. So if you walked up to the service bar, if this is approved, and you came up, whoever 's standing there, the bartender will say no, you'd have to sit down at a table, and waitress or waiter would be able to serve you. You're not gonna walk up like you would inside, and yet, it's not for customer use, these are customers that are gonna see it, we just don't have room inside that won't, so that's why we're gonna get outside.
And the tap you got, and the tap you got in your present outdoor seating area.
Yes.
You're getting rid of that, you're putting it in the box.
It's in the bar now, but if you wanted us to get rid of it, move it to the other side, then we can move that too, it's what, so we're still gonna be outside.
I'd be completely-
Correct, we're just, yes. If you want, we can build a box around it so no one can see it, that's easy too.
Well, I got a lot of complaints about that, so.
Okay.
That's, that was my only.
We'll take care of it, we can just around that one specific.
So you won't be able to see from the street.
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna have whatever town officials wanna come up and say what they have to say. Mike, Chris?
My name is Mike Connavalli, I'm the zoning official and building inspector. I took the time to draw some maps, so sure, exactly, should be one of them. I just wanna state for the record that this is an expansion of legal nonconforming use, and there's a way this could be done. If you see here on the yellow part of your map, that's the town property for the parking, for the senior center. And during the summer hours, the senior center is gonna have a lot of events at nights where those parking spaces are gonna be filled. The green area is where the expansion of the outside seating was originally done. Now, the blue area is what they're asking for. I don't have any problems with this outside seating, but legal nonconforming, there's no more parking spaces left in this parking lot for them to do business, where they need a minimum amount of twenty-three for seventy patrons. Now, they can park in the back of Sorentos, which is owned by the same person, Steve Campo, but it's, there's no lines to determine how many spaces are there, so our suggestion is, you get a site plan for parking, give it to Dave Westcott, because you won't have to go in front of planning, and go in front of the planning committee. He can make the determination of all the spots will accommodate Sorentos and the other four businesses there, and Camp Nowhere. If that all works out, then alls they have to do is go in front of zoning, and zoning will give them the legal nonconforming use to expand. And then everything's done legally, and nobody could question anything on all the decisions that are made. So, you know, we're here to try and get every business up and running and make them more successful and expand them. We're not here to try and shut anything down, but being the zoning official, I have to make sure that it's done legally, because then the breeze will come out, the Providence Journal will come out and say there, they've pushed the limit without getting it done the proper way. So, we want it done the proper way, so they can enjoy their business, and we're all legal here.
That's what he's gonna say, okay.
Anybody questions for Mike?
Well, I, I have a question for, I guess for our legal counsel. If, if, this is a, a expansion of illegal nonconforming, is that something that we can even grant?
Well, if that's what he's saying, and it has to go back to the zoning board, then probably not, but what was the, but you didn't have, you didn't have an issue with regards to the green in the front though, correct?
No, at that time, when the council passed, when we looked at the situation, they could put thirty more patrons, where the, the whole building could have seventy, we figured that that was okay, because they were using the parking at the time for the senior center, and they had all the parking down the side, and besides their dumpster, so they could have parked at least thirteen cars there. And even using the senior center gave them a little bit of option. But now that the summer months are coming, the senior center is gonna use all that parking, and we can't expect the older clientele in the town to back out into Atlantic Boulevard, they have to be able to pull forward and get out of that curb cut on Smith Street.
Okay. So I'm trying, what I'm trying to figure out though is, is that if you think that the blue pot is an expansion of illegal nonconforming, but the green wasn't, and the green you didn't have a problem with because it was a parking issue.
At the time, I-
So if they come back with a parking plan?
They, they didn't go to zoning for the green pot.
Correct.
It was approved here, and once it was done, we approved the permits to put the ballots in. Well, once we do all the figuring on this, once we got the site plan and the class one survey, we saw that this is now, you know, the expansion of legal nonconforming. And plus, where it touches the senior center parking lot, because this is accessory use, it's gonna be ten feet off of that property line from the senior center.
I saw that, I saw it's right on the line.
It's right on the line.
I was hoping-
Now, it's a CV zone, you could build buildings, you could touch buildings together. When it's accessory use, like a deck or a seating area, that has to maintain the ten feet.
So they don't have that either?
No, so that would have to be pushed back just a little bit more.
Okay, either push back or get some sort of zoning relief.
Right, or get the zoning relief, yes.
Cause I saw it, it busts the boundary line, and there's no space in between the two, there's no space in between the two.
No.
So, Councilman, based on his representations, it appears it has to go to zoning.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? If I may-[1721.33] If I may say one more thing, if, if they, what Dave Westcott and I spoke about, if they get a site plan for parking and determine and line up the back parking lot behind Sorento's, because it looks like there's about 50 spaces that could be done there against the building, against the fence and down the center. And then all the ones in the front, I think this could work out, but it has to be put on paper. And Steve Campo has to do the right thing and line the parking lot so we determine what we could see in actual parking spaces. Because right now, it's a guess. People are parking all over the place, there's no uniform parking behind the building, especially if you're parking in the middle. So let's put it to a point where everybody has a designated parking area and it all works out properly where there's no injuries, no accidents, and they don't have anything to worry about with lawsuits and neither does the town being part of this parking lot.
I understand what you're saying and that obviously sounds good. I was just concerned, I was just wondering whether or not if you did all of that, what you just said with the parking, did that be enough for what your officer, Westcott, to approve it? But it sounds like it's got to go to zoning anyway.
It's got to go to zoning anyway, yes.
Even if they don't believe in the non, if they don't believe you on the non, expansion of the nonconforming.
Mm-hmm.
It still has to go to zoning because they're, they're, what their building is budding up right against the boundary line of the property.
Right.
And there's no setback footage.
Right.
But, you know, whether it's 10 feet for this deck or three feet for a shed, whatever, everybody's going to have to have setback, is what you're saying.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I was just trying to figure out if we could get a site plan and you guys could approve it, apparently they need to go to zoning.
Right, yes, they do.
Any more questions for Mike?
But we are willing to help go on a zoning. Because I render my opinions as zoning too.
I was just wondering if there was a way to avoid it, but it sounds like even if they don't agree with the expansion of the nonconforming, they still have the boundary, right on the boundary line problem.
Manny?
Yeah.
Good question. Uh, Mike, just, just to clarify, you said if Steve Campo does the right thing and he, he lines the lot. Um, but I had heard you say previously at one of the many times that they've been here, they could also absorb the cost of doing that themselves as long as Steve Campo agrees.
Because they've absorbed the cost of fixing all the, all the holes in the parking lot through these poor guys.
Right, no, I know, they, they put a lot of work into it.
And we've asked them many times, I've sent them letters, he refused to send letters back to me, the owner. And these guys have done the asphalt in the parking lot, stopped the people from tripping going into Sorento's. So they have, you know, they, they're working with the town to do what's going to be done, but it has to be done through the legal ways as zoning official.
One question. With everything, with the parking you're trying to find now, plus the other businesses that are there, Sorento's and that, whether they're open or not, all those add to what you have to get?
Yeah.
So if, you think all the spots are there with that square footage?
I, I think we're close because Sorento's has a 70-person capacity.
Because you're, you're also taking two now, which you're going to add.
They need 23 parking spaces. You have the, the, um, the printing store, two parking spaces, the nail salon, sometimes two or three. And you have one other business in there, I can't remember what it is.
You have the bagel shop.
The bagel shop. And in the morning, they're the ones that are busy, they're not busy at night, they close early. So that's, that's not really a factor.
So to Steve's point before, you, can you utilize those, I mean, can they utilize those spots as parking spots? Even if the other businesses not closing, it's not theirs?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
That's, that's what I.
My question was, if I have a license on point A and I need point B's property for me to get the proper license, you're saying that I could use it?
Yeah.
And I'm saying, how do you make that happen? I don't, I, I can't figure it out for all I can, I can't figure it out.
You just do it.
In other words, I can't see how you can put a license here and then over there where Manny's sitting, we can use that so that we can find a way to park cars.
Just, just a simple example. Across the street from them is, uh, is the senior center. They got an empty lot in the back. If they went to the senior center.
They're utilizing that?
No, I know it, but I'm just giving you an example. If they, if, if they go to the senior center, the senior center says, we're not using it, we'll give you permission to use that. They can bring that permission slip into, into us showing that they picked up whatever, 20 parking spaces in that, in that piece of property. So that's how, that's how it works.
Yeah, it, so I, I would assume you're saying because that's all on one parcel of land.
No, it's not.
No, I'm, well, if you had all those businesses together with that, in that parking lot, you're saying it's all on one corner.
Let's say Steve Campo decides to sell the five units, Sorento's and the five units. And they weren't able to get a land lease, a parking lease to use that back parking lot, where does that leave them? That's why I wanted it to go to zoning, so if zoning approves it, we all, it's all done the proper way.
If you just, allowing you on the point that I just tried to make, let's say President Steve sells Sorento's to Baler Shop Plaza. And these guys want to stick around there? Do they now lose their licenses because now you don't have that property? That's the point I'm trying to make.
Well, see, that's, that's where the legal part gets to, and I'm not an attorney, I'm just a zoning official.
How you normally incorporate it is, is if the business owner would execute a lease with the other property owner and the, the lease would govern and that, that, for the term of that lease, they would have enough parking. If they do not allow the lease to keep renewing while they're doing business, then they could potentially be in a bind, like you're saying, Councilman, and they would not have that. If that runs out, then they would have a problem. But it's, it's done, it's done in most cities and towns where, believe it or not, you can lease an adjacent lot from another property owner and it's fine. I think in this particular case, what they did was they don't have a lease to give you because what they did was they rented a storefront. But if you want them in, to clean that up and, uh, as part of this whole process, have Mr. Campo give the Camp Nowhere a lease, I'm sure they'll, once the parking lot's lined and everything, I'm sure they can provide a lease. But it does happen unfortunately. But if the lease ever runs out, they're jammed up like you're saying.
I still don't understand, but that's okay. What about the final?
All right, well, let's get, well, I'm not done. Any more questions for, for Mike? Okay, Mark, let's go.
So our biggest concern was the, the 70 people that have been in that Camp Nowhere. And the amount of square foot that they're going to be doing for the outside dining. You've got to understand that when they do the outside dining, it's going to be about a thousand extra square feet. So we have to figure that on an occupancy level. We figured the 70, the 70 people for the inside of that building, but we also got to figure the amount of people now for the outside of that building. They have given me a letter stating that they are not going to go over that 70 capacity at any given time, inside and out. So I want, I have copies of it. So when we figured, when we figured the, the occupancy outside, it was about a thousand extra square feet out there. Now, with tables and chairs, we divide that by a 15, an occupant load number of 15, and it gives you about another 60 people. But they're, they're saying that they're going to keep that within 70 people inside and out at any given time, they're going to have someone there using a clicker. So at, at this point in time, I have no problem with them keeping it at 70. How are we going to monitor that?
You're saying, no, wait, let me get this straight. You're saying that they're saying they're going to have only 70 people?
70 people inside and out at all, at any given time.
So in other words?
So if they have 70 people inside that building, there's not going to be one person outside and on the outside dining. Correct?
You're basically making more room for the same amount of people is what you're trying to say.
Correct. That's why there's four picnic tables that are going to hold six people in the service bar.
So the most issue is, what I see is.
So our big, our biggest concern was if there were 70 people here and there were 60 people outside on a great, on a nice sunny night, on a Friday night, and all of a sudden it starts to downpour, where are those 60 people going? Can't, we can't jam them in, uh, uh, an occupancy of 70 people, we can't have 130 people in that building. So that was our major concern, but they're going to keep it at 70 regardless of their inside or out.
Not for anything, not for anything, let me just, not for anything, to me it's competing. Why would you want to expand like that if you can only keep the same amount of people? In other words, you can't, it's odd for you to sit 70 people inside at once. Okay.
They could probably seat about 50 to 30.
All right, I follow. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, so, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing a little bit of skepticism and I understand. But this is, this is not a novel concept where a business has seating inside and seating outside. How do businesses typically do that with, with occupancies? Is, is all businesses do it this way where they have one occupancy for the inside and they're not allowed to go over inside and outside or, uh, you, you don't?
No, they can, they can have 70 people inside the building, they can have 60 people outside on the calculated numbers that we'll use. We just have to guarantee that the 60 people that are outside, if it starts to rain, they're going to have to run to their cars.
So, so theoretically.
I have to use an occupant load inside and outside that building.
Yeah, I got you. So, so they could have an occupancy of 70 inside, 60 outside.
Correct.
But if something happens where it rains, they just can't let anybody go inside.
Correct. Correct.
All right, that makes more sense. Any more questions for Mark? Okay, I guess not. Thank you. Sure, absolutely.
First of all, that, that's why we indicated that it was going to be 24 people outside because we, we, we are clear that it's not an expansion of capacity. We knew these issues, they don't, the owner does not want to deal with it. He doesn't want to have a rainstorm and have 60 people run into their cars. It's not good business. It's not the way he's handling his business, number one. Number two, just for clarification, just so it's on the record, every city town in the state allows an abutting landowner to lease, buy, purchase a budding land to use as a parking lot. It's been going on since the 1800s in the city of Providence.
There's, there's, listen, there's no question about you being able to lease a parking lot next. I, I, there's not, I'm not, that's not a question I have in my mind at all. My question is, how do you use that property to get a license for a certain piece of property? I don't care about them leasing, please let me finish. I don't care about them leasing the property for them, it's more business for them. I agree. My problem is if I'm, if, if Camp, where Camp Nowhere is, then you're going to get a, you're going to comply to get a liquor license and entertainment license there.
Well, you're.
Leasing the property elsewhere is something totally different.
Well, your zoning ordinance allows for it, every, the zoning ordinance is allow for it. You have to show you have appropriate parking in the, in the vicinity that you're going to. However, what I've been asked to say is that my, the owner of the property has talked to zoning and he was told on numerous occasions that he didn't need a 10-foot setback. We'll go back and redraw it. He wanted me to state that, that he's met with zoning and he was told he didn't need that setback. That's why the plans were drawn that way. So while everybody's here, that's what was told to him. We'll go back and, and redraw it. But I just want to make the point, we're not asking for an increase in capacity. Now, I would assume, doing this for a number of years, that if you have an owner like this who's saying it's going to be 24 and he violates that, I would assume that this council and this board is going to do something about that. Not only did he say it, he put it in writing to you. I, for me, as an attorney, I, I, I take that as a serious step, that that's what you're actually going to be doing. So while I understand your, your council's issue with the, with, and your zoning official's issues with the 10 feet, we just want it on the record that my client said, he's had numerous conversations and he was told he didn't need that setback. That's why it was drawn that way. So we clearly understand that at this point, we have to come back with a drawing. But again, it's, it's not a capacity issue where we need to go to zoning.
So, so Peter, uh, your argument would be it's not a, it's not an expansion of a legal nonconforming use because you're not.
It's an expansion of seasonal, it's a seasonal expansion to allow the 70 that they have in the building to be spread out outside. It's seasonal expansion, it is not an expansion of capacity. They've said it, now if they do it, listen, as you all know, they do it at their own peril. And Councilman, you're absolutely correct. If in fact, they lose the lease on this, this parking lot that you're, you're grasping with, yes, you could bring them back before you and say, you don't have the parking for the original 70, you're done, we're yanking your license. Absolutely, that can be done anywhere in this state.
Kenny?
I was actually going to make a motion at this time, I think we're beating a dead horse. It, it clearly has to go before zoning, so I was going to make a motion um, to suggest that they get the proper zoning approval and come back before us at a later meeting.
Yeah, continue. I would make a motion that, make your motion to continue this until next month. You guys, you guys go back.
No, maybe not next month.
Well, yeah.
I don't know if they're going to make next month.
Can I ask a question? Would that be for both, the 10 feet and the parking, or is it just the 10?
For both.
It's just for both to get approval on both, yes.
At least, put it on for next month, if, if they can't get done what they can get done, then we can always kick it a month. They'll be in the queue for next month to try to. Because I'm sure that this is seasonal and they're trying to.
So make your motion to continue it till next month. And you people go back and get whatever you need to get your 10-foot, your.
I'll get involved, I haven't been involved, Councilman, I'll, I'll get involved from this point.
Okay.
So I, I restate my motion, I'm making a motion to continue this matter to next month to give the applicants an opportunity to get the proper zoning permissions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amiri. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number nine, entertainment license, town council consider, consideration impossible vote on an application for an entertainment license filed by Copacabana Incorporated, 888 Charles Street, North Providence. Does anyone here from Copacabana? Just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry?
State your name.
My name, Juan.
Juan, okay.
Yeah.
Last name?
Sandoval.
Thanks.
Just, yeah, because we want to apply for the entertainment license, not to be like, just karaoke, like guitar, something like that.
Does anybody have any questions on the entertainment license?
Yeah.
Councilman?
Yeah, what's, what's the plan? So what, what are you planning on doing?
Uh, just like, do like karaoke, like, uh, like comedy, something like that, not to be like, you know.
He said comedy and karaoke.
Just speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry?
Speak into the mic, if you've got to hold it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, that.
And how many nights a week?
I'm sorry?
How many nights a week are you?
Uh, only weekends, like Friday and Saturdays, um, maybe Sundays, someday.
Any other questions, Councilman?
What hour is you planning on?
Between, like, between 9:00 PM to, till 1:00 PM, that's what we have.
Until 9:00, 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM?
Yeah.
Do you have any, uh, sound system inside that's going to amplify the sound?
Not yet, no, 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 no.
Do you plan on doing that or would it be just basically?
Not something, uh, maybe, yeah, but not too loud, you know? Because it's not, it's not a club, it's just a restaurant.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, there were a motion to grant.
So moved.
Motion to be made by Councilman Amiri, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fimigetti, any questions? If you have your nonos in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 10, entertainment license, town council consideration impossible vote on an application for an entertainment license filed by the Providence Brewing Company, LLC, 1920 Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence.
Good evening, gentlemen and Mary. Um, my name is Efrain Adalgo, I'm the owner of the Providence Brewing Company and we're looking to see if we can also apply for an entertainment license.
Does anybody have any questions? What kind of, Councilman, go ahead.
Well, we're hoping to bring in acoustic singers, comedians, um, into the brewery to help entertain our customers. And we'd only open, um, on Friday evenings, Saturday evenings and only on Sundays after all the businesses have closed down in that mall. We don't have any other entertainment in the, in the brewery, so we don't have any TVs or anything. We're really more about kind of talking face to face with the customer at all times.
Do you have a question?
No, no question.
Is there any other questions? Okay, do you have a motion to grant?
So moved.
Motion to be made by Councilman Fimigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Maton, any further questions? If you have your nonos in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, tennis courts at Richie School. Oh, I'm sorry. 15, sorry. Item number 15, permanent speed bump, council president requests discussion impossible vote on a permanent speed bump on Lawnacre Drive. I've put this, several of these on the agenda. I am looking to entertain a motion to have the clerk send letters to everyone on the street and see if they will respond if they want a speed bump. We've had no luck with two of them, we'll see if this third one works. So, motion's been made by Councilman Fimigetti, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Juisty, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? They guarantee me they have 51 percent of the people on the street that want this, so we'll see. Item number 17, tennis courts at Richie School, Councilman Maton requests discussion and vote regarding the tennis courts at Richie. Councilman Maton requests discussion and vote regarding the tennis courts at Ritchie School. Councilman?
Yeah, so I received a few calls with regards to the tennis courts at Ritchie School. At this point, or as of at least a few weeks ago, or a month ago, those tennis courts were in disrepair. I think that, that the town, you know, could use more tennis courts. I know we have the nice courts at Renati Park, but tennis being a kind of a lifelong sport, I think it'll benefit not only the school, but also town residents that, from toddlers all the way up to our senior population. So, what I was requesting, although I have to say, based on a conversation I had today, my request has changed a little bit, is at this point, it appears that the town is actually taking some steps to address this issue. So, at this point, my request would simply be to let, to let the town continue to hopefully make improvements. I would just ask that we, and we can have more discussion, but all I would ask is that we continue this matter, maybe for a month. Let's let the town continue to make those improvements. My understanding is that some nets went in, that some, some things have happened there. I need to go check it out. And if, and if it's not done satisfactorily, if there are any more issues, then we can take it up a little bit, at a little bit later time.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Maton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions?
I spoke with both Councilman Maton and Councilman Di Lorenzo, and I also communicated with you, President Audiallo. This is a long, a long time. We've had these courts for a long time, and they need a lot of work. As you well know, you've tried to work and get them fixed previously, I know that. But I did go there a couple of days ago and take pictures, and so that it's going to be evident. So I just would like to give you each, I already gave copies to Councilman Maton and Councilman Di Lorenzo, but I would like the council as a whole to have it. There's a copy for each member and as well as for the clerk, for the record. So, you can, they're really self-explanatory. They go through each, each court. There are four courts, and, you know, from, I did a east-west, but you can see them, you can see the, on number one, the big crack running down the middle. Number two, the west front court, you can see the crack again, a close-up of another crack down the middle. These are all different cracks, except a few are a close-up of one that you couldn't really see at a distance. Number five, you can see it along the posts. Six, again. Seven, near the fence. Eight, the back courts, because there are two front courts, two back courts, and so you can see the, the big cracks running down the center, and curving around in the back court, number 10. They're really, number 11, you can see an additional crack on the side of the back court. And number 12, east back court. And 13, an additional crack. So, and 14 as well, near the posts. And you can see the condition of the posts, they need to be replaced, or at least the fixtures on the posts. This is, these courts are maybe, what, 30 years old anyway? And they, I, why is this important? It's important because, well, I'll just tell you a little story. I taught my daughter how to play there. It was a beautiful setting when it was first done. The town used to run a program there, clinics, Milton, I don't know if any of you might, might remember, Milton ran a program through the rec department where they had clinics. They taught all the little kids there. It was a beautiful thing. The high school tennis teams used to play there, very important. My friends and I and neighbors used to all play there. It's important because, it's important to the neighborhood, it's important to the community. And we don't want deteriorated courts, because deterioration leads to more deterioration. And so we need to have them improved. And also, North Providence has an aging population, okay? And as we age, we want to have places to go to that may, a short drive away, walk to. And those courts are centrally located, and as you can see from the setting, it's a beautiful setting. The trees, the complex is, in my opinion, lovely. And we need it for all of our residents, from the little kids to the, could have a middle school. There are nine middle schools that have tennis teams, and we don't have one, we couldn't have one there, and they couldn't practice up at Stephen Olney Park because the high schools use that, the high school uses that after school. So they would need their own space to have practices after school. There are, like I said, there are nine middle school teams in the state right now. It's an up-and-coming sport. I'd like our students and our kids to have the opportunity, as well as my, myself, my neighbors, all ages. And I will mention, I did call the school department and informed superintendent about this meeting. He could not attend it tonight. He did communicate with the principal at Ritchie, Mr. Mellon, and both of them, I've been informed, are in favor of, of anything that we can do to make, make the courts down there, as well as across the running track, but that's another, another topic. Good, and be able to, and I'm, I know that I'm kind of, I know you, many of you agree with me, and it's just, how can we find the money? Well, whether there's, whether the town can do it on their own, that would be wonderful. Is there grant money? The $56,000 that was partially used for tennis courts didn't go down to Ritchie, but I'd like that initiative to be expanded, to include Ritchie at least. And the cost not to fix them is a cost to, to our kids, a loss of opportunity, a cost to us, a cost to our neighborhood, and we want, you know, we don't want to bear that cost by not fixing them. So I'm hoping that it works out, and next month, we have a good report and, and things are looking up. And if, if not, hopefully the council will, will bring us into where we need to be to get these up and, up and going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. As she knows and as Maru knows, about three weeks ago, talking with Jim Peruli, he's got bids going on for the cracks that we've concealed and done. I believe he's got paint put aside already. He's already got some nets. I think he needs one more net. So progress is on the way to help you with this. We've talked about it, so you know.
Thank you, thank you.
I look forward to the report next month, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 18, breeding of animals. Councilman Amiri requests discussion and possible vote regarding breeding of animals in residential areas. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I believe this is the third time I put this on in my two-plus years on the council, and they're back again in the very crowded area of Maryville on the side towards Providence and Pawtucket. We now have, well, the main residence is 22 Paave. They're breeding dogs for sale and flaunting it in the face of the town by advertising it online. They're also breeding dozens and dozens of rabbits. They're right in the yard in cages. There's waste everywhere. I'm not really telling you anything I haven't told you guys before, but for the new guys, it's been a major problem up there. It's led to the rodent infestation, and I, from what I understand, our animal patrol officer Kalenda, as well as our building and zoning official Carnavalli, their suggestion to me in the past was that they need stronger ordinances, make it a little easier to enforce infractions. There's already ordinances in place prohibiting this, but there are a couple here, a couple people, neighbors tonight that want to speak.
I live at 21 Top Hill Road. Most of you have seen me here plenty of times. They have been fined. They did clean up their bunny farm in the backyard. What they've done now is they've moved their business to the front yard. They've blocked, so you really can't see, there's two cars permanently parked on the sidewalk. They block the driveway, and there's just bunnies all over the front yard. They breed rottweilers, and now they also have German shepherds that they're breeding. I found photos on Facebook, as well as I've taken photos that we've gotten from the neighbor next door who's also here. We really need something done, because like we've said before, it's attracting rodents. The whole town now has coyotes. There's several coyotes on Windmill Street. It's food for coyotes. It's food for rats. And yesterday, all the bunnies disappeared. I don't know if they were sold. I don't know if they knew it was on the agenda, if they were abducted by aliens. I don't really know, but they're gone. So, it's only a matter of time before they, they're back. So we really want this fixed up before the rats are here again, before it's warmer and it smells. And I also, a few times, told you about 24 Benedict Street. There's still two 400-pound pigs living there also. So, I mean, it's, it's just, we need answers, we need resolutions, we need these farm animals taken out of our town. So, I have photos here.
Are you gonna leave those photos for us?
What's that?
Are you gonna leave those photos?
Yeah, these are your copy.
Kenny?
Yes.
When you talk to Carnavalli, what do they say?
So, Carnavalli seemed to agree that the zoning ordinance that's in place is, it's clear that the breeding's not allowed there. The issue is, is that his ways to enforce it are limited. They're really focused on the homeowner, and we believe that at least the people at 22 Paave are renters. And so he's had some issues hailing the homeowners into court. Animal Patrol Officer Kalenda had stated to me, and unfortunately, he couldn't make it last year to the meeting, he was on vacation, he actually said he would like to come to an ordinance committee meeting and give some suggestions as how to make their ability to enforce these ordinances quicker and more efficient. So I was gonna make a motion tonight to that effect, basically.
Just if there's a law on the book that says that's illegal, I still, I still can't understand.
Nobody can understand. And they're still trying to determine if he's a hobby breeder or a breeder. There's people in and out of this house all day long. These gentlemen do not work. They're not doing this as a hobby. They're doing this as an income, a way of living, paying whatever they're paying. It's, it's not a hobby. It's a business.
This is definitely a business.
You can see that. I mean, I will say that some of the rabbit photos, after zooming in on some of these pictures, are at a much bigger barn, so I believe he may have some other place that he's keeping more of these rabbits. I mean, I'm not an investigator, I really don't know. This is just me skimming through his Facebook page and seeing what we see on a daily basis in the neighborhood.
Can we, well, maybe this is a conversation for the ordinance committee, but can we simply make it a, I mean, it could be a civil, or I think we could do a criminal, for the person who's breeding, and make it on a per-animal basis?
I think that's-
So, we could, we could find them the maximum amount that's allowable, which I think is 500 for a town ordinance, and, but do it on a per-animal basis. So, they has 20-
500 each animal.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Over whatever's legally allowed.
Yeah, that way we don't have to worry about the homeowner, we don't, it could be on an individual. Now, well, we can talk, talk about the intricacies of it a little bit later.
No, and I think that's what Animal Patrol Officer Kalenda was suggesting last year. And again, unfortunately, he was on vacation, he was out of the country, but he, he said that based upon other towns and cities he's dealt with, there are ways to target the renters.
I have a question. So if the ordinance is changed, is he considered grandfathered in because he was, okay?
No. No. Motion?
Yes. I'd like to make two. I'll start with one. Make a motion to send this matter to the ordinance committee to review and make recommendations with regards to revising or implementing new ordinances to address the breeding-for-profit issue, and also that we invite Officer Kalenda and Mike Carnavalli to the meeting.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amiri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman McCollum. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
And my other motion, actually, this is something we haven't done yet, and it's worked in other towns and with some of my legal clients. I make a motion that we send a letter to the Rhode Island ASPCA and ask them to investigate both 22 Paave and 24 Benedict Street.
That's a great idea. Motion's been made by Councilman Amiri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
I just want to add some more light on my house, which is, I live next door, like, next to them. My house is two-family house, right? And we live there with the, with whole family, and I have tenants. They were good tenants, they are good tenants so far. They, we've been like, living together like for five years, and they, they just said to me, they not gonna live like this. So probably I'm gonna lose the tenants. I could say about my kids also, which they are horrified to playing, you know, outside. But I, I did, I talked about it last year.
Thank you. Okay, we'll notify you in the ordinance committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully this works. Okay, item number 19, National Grid Properties in North Providence. Councilman Amiri requests discussion and possible vote regarding the properties in the town owned by National Grid. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is very simple. I think, I want to take a different tact with National Grid. As you've probably read in the briefs, the mayor has finally made some inroads into potentially purchasing at least the properties in Maryville that National Grid owns. So rather than, we've come down on them a little heavy-handed in the past and sent, have sent letters asking them to clean the properties, I simply wanted to make a motion tonight to send a letter to National Grid stating that we fully support the mayor's efforts to purchase the properties, and that as a council, we're asking that they facilitate the sale or gifting of these properties to the town as soon as possible.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Amiri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 20, mattress disposal. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on an ordinance regarding mattress disposal. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it was brought to my attention by one of the residents in District 2 that a property owner nearby has mattresses outside. Unfortunately, after speaking with the recycling director, there's not much that the town can actually do as far as getting rid of certain mattresses if they're not, believe it or not, some mattresses are considered contaminated and they can't touch it because they have to be disposed a certain way. That being said, I would like to make a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee for discussion and possible vote on ordinances and strengthening our ordinances regarding mattress disposal.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman McCollum. Is there any questions? Councilman?
I plan on inviting him when I create the meeting, but yes.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 21, go-karts on public roads. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on use of go-karts on public roads. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was brought to my attention. There, there are go-karts, recreational vehicles being used in, well, it was brought to my attention, at least plaid, but I've been hearing that they've been used elsewhere. The main concern that people have brought to me, they're used by children, which I'm not sure is legal, but in any event, the problem is that people in the neighborhood are driving, they can't see a go-kart that's low to the ground, and there have been a couple of close calls of hurting and crashing into children. So, that being said, I'd like to make two motions. First motion, send a letter to the community police officer to ask his advice on how to First motion, send a letter to the community police officer to ask his advice on how to deal with this issue.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman AmeriGi. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Second motion, Mr. President, is just to refer this matter to the ordinance committee for discussion.
Okay, a motion's been made. To refer the matter to ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman AmeriGi. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, board appointments. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to appointments to be made to the following boards. Okay, zoning board to replace the alternate Mario Matone. Is there a motion in place?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nicholas Narducci III.
Okay, a motion has been made by Councilman AmeriGi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famagetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Just note for the record, one nay. Okay. Enter Environmental Commission, appointment of council representative. Okay, I'm gonna defer this till next month, till we make that decision. And C, Juvenile Herring Board, mayoral appointment, see letter attached. Dear President Odiello and members of the town council, please be advised that I appoint Aaron Piticelli Blanco, Seventeen Row Street, North Providence, as my choice for the Juvenile Herring Board. Thank you for your attention to this matter, very truly, truly yours, Charles Lombardi, Mayor. Do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Mr. Blanco. A motion's been made by Councilman AmeriGi, is there a second? Second by Councilman Famagetti. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, joint pole location. Discussion and possible vote with regard to petitions from Verizon, New England, and National Grid for new joint pole locations on Azad Court and Colonial Drive. Do I have a motion to approve the joint pole locations? Motion's been made by Councilman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman AmeriGi. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-four, claims submitted, town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following. Elysio Avora, fifty-seven Caravoli Street, North Providence. Jamie Guerra, one thirty-eight Urban Avenue, North Providence. And Lorraine Michella, four, four Heritage Circle, North Providence. Do I have a motion to submit these to the Claims Committee?
So moved.
A motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman AmeriGi. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-five, Claims Committee Report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regards to the Claims Committee Report, and approval, denial, or referral of claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Juisty. Councilman?
Yep, we had three claims. First claim was from Elysio Avora. That was an accident with one of our rescue trucks, so we automatically sent that to the insurance company. The next one was from Lorraine Michella, and that was for a po, a blown tire, and we paid the amount of two nineteen seventy-nine for that. And the last one was from Jamie Guerra, and we denied that claim.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the Claims Committee Report?
So moved.
A motion been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman AmeriGi. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, Ordinance Committee Report. Town council discussion and action with regard to the Ordinance Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Famagetti. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met, the ordinance committee met March twenty-seventh, and we discussed a number of items. Spicer Street, which we already addressed earlier tonight. Also, we addressed the, for stop sign at Coase Street, and the Charter Amendment regarding the Purchasing Board. Those were the crux of the, of the meeting. That being said, you all have in front of you the report, so I would like to make a motion to accept the Ordinance Committee Report.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
And, Mr. President, I do have a couple of motions-
Oh, okay.
-related to what came out of the ordinance committee. First one, after our discussions with Lieutenant Tavarosi regarding Spicer Street, and again, not to repeat what was already said tonight, but we are on our way to hopefully remedying the situation. Per the recommendation of the community police officer, it was voted on the ordinance committee to send a communication to the Department of Public Works for painting of double yellow lines on Spicer Street. So at this time, I would like to make that motion, just send that communication.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman AmeriGi. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Next, Mr. President. As I mentioned, we did vote on a stop sign on Coase Street. That being said, I would like to make a motion per the recommendation of the Ordinance Committee to introduce an ordinance for a stop sign on Coase Street and advertisements for public hearing for next month's council meeting.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
And the last item, Mr. President, is the Charter Amendment regarding the Purchasing Board. There were four changes that were requested, and we worked up those changes. I will run through them briefly. I will run through the summary of it. So upon motion that was made and unanimously passed, we, we voted to adopt the first change that was requested by the purchasing agent, which would change language in the Charter specifying, which would require a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed at least five days in advance of the meetings of the members. We are requesting that change. We are changing language in the Charter that would, rather than omit the time of the meetings that the Purchasing Board, which was requested, we would change the Charter to read that the Board shall hold all meetings at any handicap accessible town-owned building. I'm paraphrasing. All meetings shall be held on weekdays at a time that is determined by unanimous Voting Board. Last, we discussed a change that was requested regarding the amending of bids and extending the time of bids. We were willing to approve that change, subject to a positive opinion by the solicitor, which we did receive communication from the town solicitor, and concerns regarding opening up the town to liability was expressed. Therefore, everybody should have an Exhibit A that would reflect the changes that we are, we approved, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to send a resolution to the General Assembly for seeking the changes in Exhibit A.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, so I have Version A and Version B in here.